A compliance from Chapter 230 of the Public Law in 1975 entitled Opened Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of May 9th, 2011. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Sun, Star Ledger, the North Jersey Herald News, and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun on May 19th, 2011, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand for a moment of silence. I'll flag. Please call the board.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton here. Ms. Lynn here. Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Mr. Spazada?
Here.
As our agenda states, we will be going into closed executive session and coming back out at 7:30, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempted from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10, code 4-12. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at this time and discuss personnel and contracts for physicians and facilities. It be further resolved that the results of discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, where the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. I so. All's in favor?
Aye.
All stand. Flag's meeting.
To apply from the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the board.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton here. Ms. Lynn here. Mr. Kaczynski?
Here.
Dr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Mr. Spazada?
Here.
Mr. Hookte?
Here. Motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
Please move.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Minutes are approved as distributed. Any correspondence?
No.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Taking some liberty as my first superintendent's report.
First and foremost, want to thank the Board of Education, both the past members for finding
me and the current members for approving me, and to both groups for trusting me with its great responsibility to lead the district. Also thanks to the mayor and the community members who have come out in droves to welcome me and extol all the virtues of Nutley and the expectations that they have for me in this role. I do want to thank Joe Zara for his efforts making sure I had as seamless a transition as possible. In all honesty, a more honorable educator I don't think I will meet, and I will work to maintain the state that he has set in this position. I want to thank the Education Association, Nutley, the faculty and administrators for the overwhelmingly positive reception over the last month and a half. The energy and commitment they've displayed only strengthen the resolve that I have and my belief that this definitely was the right decision in coming here. I want to thank Karen and the central office staff who have welcomed me before and who work every day for the students and the community of Nutley. Many people think that summer is a quiet time for educators, but this is, and I can attest this, absolutely not true. Summer months are filled with the closing of one year and the preparation for the next. In the short time since my appointment, I visited school, met with administrative, faculty, and staff as well as students. We have held what will be the first of many principal and board retreats just last week with members of the public in attendance where we establish base lines as well as initial objectives for our work to come. I also continue to work with the staff, administrators, and members of the community to finalize what has been a challenging budget process this year. I am committed to finding only the most qualified and capable, the most creative and resourceful professionals to come work for the students here in Nutley. Using a process that includes all stakeholders, we have been working with all due speed to complete the open searches and fill vacancies as we can, but I do want to make clear that I will not sacrifice quality for speed. We are doing everything we can to find the absolute right people for the positions that we have. I came to Nutley expecting to find only the most passionate and committed professionals, and I must say in my three weeks here, from the board members and community leaders to the faculty, staff, students, and community members, Nutley has not disappointed. I look forward to our collaboration as a board, as a district, and as a community, as well as all the efforts that I'll be able to talk about each time I give another one of these superintendent reports in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Secretaries' report?
Yes, I'd just like to provide an update to the board on the repairs to the middle school auditorium and room 312. I've been in contact with the insurance adjuster. He has been working with Mr. Nicolet, and Nyra has cooperated, who's one of the contractors conducting the repairs. They have negotiated a cost estimate totaling $165,691. It is being handled as an insurance payment, and as such, the contractor is going to be paid directly by the insurance company, so the district does not have any initial outlaying of costs. The responsibility for the district will be the cost of the asbestos monitoring, which involves the air monitoring and preparing and filing all the state reports, as well as the $25,000 deductible on our insurance policy. Nyra and his operator is scheduled to begin the work next week.
Thank you. Before I see the committee reports, my president's report, and before I do that, just have an announcement. There's a silver trail laser that's been reported having lights on, license plate RFU-60B. It's a front of bikes store. Someone has that vehicle, and they want to go out and check the lights. Two things I want to mention. One, the district has received an additional $540,000 of state aid. This additional aid is in addition to the $500,000 that was already built into our budgets, so it's incremental of $540,000. And following the state guidance, the board has been discussing and will be using the funds based on our strategic priorities to restore various budget cuts that occurred in this budget process. Second thing, and somewhat related in that it's budget-related, there is a, one of the resolutions is the policy and regulations with respect to participate, and that is going forward. As we had discussed in prior meetings, this is something that's necessary to complete the athletic programs when we have. Any committee reports? Seeing none? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the board to address the board. For this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed tonight's agenda. Our board regulations, allow 20 minutes for these communications. These questions are limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this time requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all their discretion to speak on a topic I've been heard. All statements will be directed to be as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please remember that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address as you know time you address the board, the first person wishing to comment.
Jennifer Higgins, 132, lives by drive, Nutley. I have a question about IEDA number six approval of service providers. I was wondering which services, Education Services LLC, is going to be providing this full year, since it's not stated, it's just a laundry list?
Number, I'm sorry, number six?
People of service providers.
Business.
On page seven?
Thank you. It's evaluations.
And is there a cap or an amount assigned to this contract? Or an amount for evaluations since it's not stated?
Yes, there is an amount in the contract.
Do you take what it is?
I don't have the contract.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to hear? It's not a closed portion of the agenda. Dr. Reed, will you move superintendent's resolutions, one through 24, including the agenda resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Please move superintendent resolutions, number one through 21, inclusive of then items number 22 and 24.
Sir. Discussion. Any discussion? Not in a roll.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Hookte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin, will you move business administrator resolutions, one through 14?
One through 15?
Yeah, one through 15? 15, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd like to move board secretary's resolutions, one through 15, with the following change to resolution number three, request for use of school buildings and grounds, to modify request number seven in appendancy to add pending approval of lease by both parties.
I have motion to separate out resolutions for including the DAs to approve up to 1 through 11, Mr. President, and then the fact that we have been having presentations by the construction manager and the architect on, is this administrative resolution 12, 13, 14, 15?
Number eight?
All right. Okay, I move board secretary resolutions, one through 11, with the following change to resolution number three, request for use of school buildings and grounds, to modify request number seven in appendancy to add pending approval of lease by both parties.
Sir. We have second? Discussion. Hold on, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Hookte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin, will you move business administrator resolutions, one through 14?
One through 15? Yeah, one through 15?
15, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd like to move board secretary's resolutions, one through 15, with the following change to resolution number three, request for use of school buildings and grounds, to modify request number seven in appendancy to add pending approval of lease by both parties.
I have motion to separate out resolutions for including the DAs to approve up to 1 through 11, Mr. President, and then the fact that we have been having presentations by the construction manager and the architect on, is this administrative resolution 12, 13, 14, 15?
Number eight?
All right. Okay, I move board secretary resolutions, one through 11, with the following change to resolution number three, request for use of school buildings and grounds, to modify request number seven in appendancy to add pending approval of lease by both parties.
Sir. We have second? Discussion. Hold on, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes.
Mr. Hookte?
Yes.
Yes.
Prior to the, prior to the approval of resolutions 12 through 15, the board would request that the architect and construction manager please come up to the podium so that they can ask pertinent questions. Thank you.
Ready? Is the opportunity? Okay, we'll start with resolution number 12, and you have questions on that?
That's the change order for Spring Garden.
Which one exactly is number 12?
Change order number four, which had to do with the reefer openings, and then change order number five, which is the washable filters.
Okay. Change order four for sunny field for Spring Garden relates to the issue that was in progress last summer when we were doing a facade repair. I don't remember how many of the board members were here or not. The steel beam behind the brick facade that was removed with the new metal panel sets was larger in size than originally anticipated when we originally cut the reefer openings. Once everything was opened up and uncovered, we had to cut additional masonry facade out of the way to fit the new reefer, so we actually had to raise it up higher than was anticipated. In return, it was done on a TNM basis so we could get the work done, so we could get the building blown back up prior to school. So that was what number four was for us. Any questions?
I have a question. Why, why, why wasn't this brought to the attention of the board prior to, I don't know, July 2010, 2011?
Because the contractor never submitted, oh, he had submitted originally, there were three days involved in the original work. He had submitted a bill for one day, realized when he got the bill from his sub that the other two days were not included. When I went back to my records, they were on site for three days performing the recutting of the opening.
Can I ask you a question? Do you generally have to compare an estimate prior to the board or, you know, the time here in the district, you know, approving such?
In certain matters, yes. When it was to the end of, like literally, this was August 26th that we uncovered this and had to get the contractor in, and then we opened the building, we did it on a time inferior basis. Labor rates are established, rental rate for equipment are already established, I know what the rates are for the guy, it's two masons for days. So no, for what was done, it was reviewed with Karen, with Mr. Nicolet, and at the time, Mr. Rogers.
But it was picked up only recently by the contractor, GC, or the sub?
The contractor missed these two tickets when he sent in his original bill for that period. It should have been three days, one change order had one day on it, there were two days that were not previously dated for.
Is this a punchless item, or was there a punch?
Close. No, this was to finish the work. Oh, this. You mean the work was punchless? No. No, but this was, the heating system was weak when we opened the building up. The outside of your building had to get the reefer, otherwise there would have been a big hole in the wall.
So what does this qualify as, as far as, you know, a change order under three days to cover?
Unforeseen, because there was no way of knowing the exact, without demolishing the existing wall, there was no way of knowing the size that you had behind it.
Since it's an unforeseen condition, why isn't the district having to pay for it? Isn't there usually on that unforeseen, you go back to whoever designed it?
Why?
Why?
It's an unforeseen condition, how would you go back to?
Because maybe possibly the person who designed it, who designed and top related, shouldn't be this district's responsibility to use the money.
Unfortunately, I know where you're going with this. Unfortunately, the only way to expose that entire beam was to do what we did, demolishing the entire facade to sea.
That's fine. So you, so wasn't the original design?
No. And that wasn't yours anyway. The design of the facade repair would have fallen under. CVM. CVM, thank you.
Okay. But that, but that should be in the, usually the analysis of the unforeseen analysis, is whether or not it was an original design or whatnot, and that, that's what I was just trying to.
An unforeseen condition means that you couldn't perceive.
I understand that.
You couldn't expect. You didn't do so much demolition to expose items in an occupied building. This would have been full-blown demolition when you did, and that would have been anticipated recently. Questions to the building, original building to build?
We didn't have the original designs when this was designed?
You're talking about an 85-year-old building?
That's fine, I'm asking the question.
The original drawings did not have proper sized beams on it either, for a CVM contract. Number five, we spur the washable filters. Any questions on five? We'll move on to.
No, I have a question on five.
Okay.
Again, this was not anticipated, we put in the first certain piece we put in, we didn't know we were going to need washable filters for that piece we put in.
No, your specs are written for disposable, you have an added stock supply of disposable paper filters that would have sat, would have sat in the basement for two months prior to being required. Mr. Nicolet requested we get pricing for washable filters because you use them throughout the rest of the district. You did get a credit back for the not supplying paper filters. Now you get the washable filters, which are, it's.
That, that could have saved us all a little headache if you were told that. Go ahead, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions? Number 13, which is E3.
The best.
Okay. The two added panels on these second and third floors for the new mechanical equipment. Your existing panels in the high school do not need currently codes. There is no neutral in the panels to connect the new equipment to. We had to put two new panels in that we can connect the new heating system to, but I'm sure in the process of doing that, panels are in, they're currently doing the remainder of the wiring work.
You did not know that the front panels did not need codes?
No.
How did we not know that?
You'd have to dismantle and take the panels apart.
But when you do that?
No, it's not standard practice to take their electric apart when you're operating the building and see whether they need codes.
But it's just standard practice to come back and give us a change order, we need to.
When we encounter something that is, doesn't, isn't normal, is unforeseen, yes. It's normal. You cannot, you could not have perceived that.
My, my estimation, when we're faced with a $102,665 change.
$70,000, $70,000. Mr. Scolera?
And I have to say this also, it's not taking the panel out, if you're looking for the neutrals, all you do is take the cover off the panel, all right, you're not, you don't have to pull the panel apart.
We're not allowed to. We're not allowed? I'm not allowed to. I can't take electrical panels apart, not allowed to. You have to assume that they're installed correctly and that they need codes. I am not allowed to take your panels apart. I'm not a licensed electrician. If you wanted to take your panels apart, you would have had to hire somebody to come in and dismantle all that electrical, and had them investigate to make sure it was all done. I can't do that.
But you worked with the, with the electricians that we hired?
I don't, no, that's after the fact. That's why it's after the fact. You've worked with the electricians after the fact, they open it up, they discover that there's something wrong, and they say, hey, there's something wrong here.
Hey, what we started?
Happens all the time.
It happens all the time with taxpayers' dollars or private.
But if I had, if I had the ability to take your panel apart ahead of time and find that your neutrals weren't installed, and I said, I put it on the drawing, you need to install neutrals for that panel, you would have paid for it anyway, what, before?
It's a lot different before. We've already approved.
It's not a lot different before.
Well, listen to me, it's different before as far as we're concerned. We've already got to the citizens, we've got nuclear workers to do it, now we're coming back and saying, oh, we screwed up, we need $17,000 more, we need $102,000 more. You can stand it because it doesn't bother you, but we, other people, have to deal with the citizens, everything. So doing it before would have been a lot easier for all of us.
May I remind you that you're, we're, how much over budget prior to me being involved?
That's not the analysis that we.
And how much money have I saved you in the whole process?
Excuse me, excuse me, when you're acting in our best interest, that's the analysis I don't want to hear, that we have extra money. Act like we have none every time you present these issues to us.
I have worked in your best interest. As a matter of fact, I was supposed to be working here for one year. I am now here on my second year, which you are not being charged for. So I have been working for you for nine months for free. So working in your best interest, I have been busting my ass in your best interest.
I'd like to, maybe I'll say what I was going to say now about this other building. I would say, I would say that there has to be a better process somewhere along the line when the gentleman says he can't open up a panel to look at something. There has to be somebody on site in charge that has to see these things, because what's happening here is, as Mr. Kaczynski said, and look, this is obviously what you're telling us is not your fault, and I understand that. It probably is the fault of the process more than anything else. But we could certainly do better than this, and I got to tell you, coming back to the taxpayers, as Mr. Kaczynski said, with over $100,000 in change orders when we get to the end of this list, is a, is a big debt on our budget. So, not blaming you, not blaming obviously the school board, but I think what we have to do is, is look at a better way of doing business. I don't know what that way is, you all, maybe you could help us find that way, but together as a team, we're going to have to do something drastically different to prevent, you know, these types of financial catastrophes, because I call it a catastrophe because of our budget problems. So I would hope that we could go down that road after tonight.
Let's see, I'd like to ask Karen if she can explain to the board and to the people, one, where the money's coming from, two, why certain things can happen, is there maybe some answers? I think she said something to me or anything, might be, maybe a better way on it?
As far as the budget is concerned, when the budget is developed, the architect builds in, monies for contingencies. So change orders come under the category of contingencies. So this is not an additional cost above the amount of the referendum, it is built into the referendum. So you're not going back to the taxpayers now and asking for additional funds for these change orders. It's all part of the initial referendum. And I think that's an important clarification, but would it, Stevens, if you did have extra money left over at the end, you could use that towards our other facilities, wouldn't that be?
I think the analogy, if in your house, when you're putting an addition in your house, and a lot of us have done it, there's always work that you did not anticipate, and that's why I would, you know, somebody say it's going to be $100,000, your budget $120,000, because you know there's going to be over, just, there's going to, things are going to happen, and, and this pulls into that category, so in one sense, it's anticipated that we're going to have these occurrences, and we do put a 10% or 5% contingency in there for this kind of thing, and we're within those parameters. You're dealing with a section of the high school that's close to one of your vaults. The conditions are unknown until you start removing things from the wall, opening up the panels. There's a lot, here's illegal wiring in there, we're fixing now just because it's hanging up there, and it's a rope bit that was soft cut, left in place, retained now, so we don't have to do down, we're trying to make it right as we go.
Something else I also want to say with the electrician, I think before you can get an estimate, you can't, I mean, we're not paying the electrician to go in and open the panels, because when we're trying to get a bid on something, you know, so I think that's what you're trying to make clear, is that you'd have to have had a contract for that electrician to come in and open the panel, we'd have to have faith. And he gave a bid, or they did your estimates, whatever they did, without opening, because until you give it to them, they can't, can't go in there.
Ms. Russo?
I have more of a concern with the process, as Mr. Rogers alluded to, the fact that we just approved upgrades to the electrical system at our last meeting, and I, as facilities chair, didn't know about these change orders. There has to be some way we can fix the process so that when board members contact me, when others on the facilities committee contact me, I can know what I'm talking about. I'm in the business, so I kind of have some idea of what's going on, but it's just surprising to me, how can we tell the public, let alone our fellow board members, what's going on if we're not notified of these last minute change orders? And I understand there's a lot of last minute things happen, things are discovered, we can't possibly know some of the things going into a job, but we have to improve the process.
Mr. Rogers?
I agree with that, I'm looking at new superintendent, because I have to take something. The past week I've run the lot, but he's given us Friday briefings now that are excellent. Can we now get a briefing if this is going to be a change order, before we get to the meeting and see? Can we get a briefing on the change order the same way you're sending some of the briefings out? Not a briefing, not tell us what this was, Charlie, we saw it on the agenda.
What I, we, I'm in fresh, what I can tell you, when we've worked with Paul even today, we walked aside, he's been extremely communicative, and when Ms. Jamins emailed him with further questions, he responded almost immediately with specifics, and so what we can do moving forward is make sure, as we talked about the committee structure, as these happen, and again, Paul has been right on top of it, and a lot of these things you don't know until you rip things down, which is why they build into the budget that. As long as we keep that communication going, we'll make sure that we get, as we talked about at retreat, to a chairperson who can then just send me the information, and then come that Friday, we make sure everyone has a follow-up. We're, I mean, as I say, you have this exactly as we got it and pretty much exactly as they found it, and so we have to move forward in, in that kind of understanding, that as these things come about, we are in communications, right in the building, we talked in today, we walked over to the high school and walked us through, not only the issues we're talking about today, but issues we need to share with the board.
Any other specific questions on these change orders as opposed to the process? We can talk about that on the new business, but I think that, you know, let's get through the agenda. One explanation for the team.
Yes, can you explain the next one, and then I have a question. We're up, we're up to change the hundred, resolution 14, which is the H3 upgrade at the high school, the $102,000.
That's real simple. Our process and our charge was to do unit ventilator replacement in the rooms. In the last four months, somebody asked, can we air condition it first? So the $102,000 is to go from just having unit ventilators in the room, having air
You have to dismantle and take the panels apart.
But would you do that?
No, it's not standard practice to take their electric apart when you're operating a building and see whether they meet code.
It's just standard practice to come back and give us a change order.
When we encounter something that is, doesn't, isn't normal, is unforeseen, yes. It's normal. You cannot, you could not have perceived that.
My estimation, when we're faced with $102,665 change orders.
Mr. Scolera.
And I have to say this also. It's not taking the panel out. If you're looking for the neutrals, all you do is take the cover off the panel. All right, you don't have to pull the panel apart.
We're not allowed to.
We're not allowed?
I'm not allowed to. I can't take electrical panels apart. Not allowed to. You have to assume that they're installed correctly and that they need code. I am not allowed to take your panels apart. I'm not a licensed electrician. If you wanted to take your panels apart, you would have had to hire somebody to come in and dismantle all the electrical and had them investigate to make sure it was all done. I can't do that.
But you work with the electricians that we hired.
I don't, no, that's after the fact. That's why it's after the fact. You've worked with the electricians after the fact. They open it up, they discover that there's something wrong, and they say, hey, there's something wrong here.
Hey, what we just restarted from the beginning.
It happens all the time with taxpayers' dollars or private.
But if I had, if I had the ability to take your panel apart ahead of time and find that your neutrals weren't installed, and I said, I put it on the drawing, you need to install neutrals for that panel, you would have paid for it anyway. What, before?
It's a lot different before. We've already approved.
It's not a lot different before.
Well, listen to me, James. It's different before as far as we're concerned. We've already got to the citizens, we've got new people to do it. Now we're coming back and saying, oh, we screwed up, we need $17,000 more, we need $102,000 more. You can stand it because it doesn't bother you, but we other people have to deal with the citizens everything. So doing it before would have been a lot easier for all of us.
May I remind you that we're, how much over budget prior to me being involved?
That's not the analysis that we should be using.
And how much money have I saved you in the whole process?
Excuse me, when you're acting in our best interest, that's the analysis I don't want to hear, that we have extra money. Act like we have none every time you present these issues to us.
I have worked in your best interest. As a matter of fact, I was supposed to be working here for one year. I am now here on my second year, which you are not being charged for. So I have been working for you for nine months for free. So, working in your best interest, I have been busting my ass in your best interest.
I'd like to maybe I'll say what I was going to say now about this other building. I would say, I would say that there has to be a better process somewhere along the line when the gentleman says he can't open up a panel to look at something. There has to be somebody on site in charge that has to see these things. Because what's happening here is, as Mr. Kozinski said, and look, this is obviously, what you're telling us is not your fault, and I understand that. It probably is the fault of the process more than anything else. But we could certainly do better than this. And I got to tell you, coming back to the taxpayers, as Mr. Kozinski said, with over $100,000 in change orders when we get to the end of this list is a big debt on our budget. So, not blaming you, not blaming obviously the school board, but I think what we have to do is look at a better way of doing business. I don't know what that way is. You all, maybe you could help us find that way. But together as a team, we're going to have to do something drastically different to prevent, you know, these types of financial catastrophes, because I call it a catastrophe because of our budget problems. So I would hope that we could go down that road after tonight.
Let's see, the gentleman asked Karen if she could explain to the board and to the people, one, where the money is going to fall, two, why certain things can happen. Does there maybe some answers? I think she said something to me or anything. Maybe we could put a better way on it.
As far as the budget is concerned, when the budget is developed, the architect builds in a, monies for contingencies. So, change orders come under the category of contingencies. So this is not an additional cost above the amount of the referendum. It is built into the referendum. So you're not going back to the taxpayers now and asking for additional funds for these change orders. It's all part of the initial referendum.
And I think that's an important clarification, but would it be, Stevens, if you did have extra money left over at the end, you could use that towards our other facilities? Wouldn't that be?
I think the analogy, if in your house, when you're putting an addition in your house, and a lot of us have done it, there's always work that you did not anticipate, and that's why I would, now somebody say it's going to be $100,000, your budget $120,000, because you know there's going to be over, just, there's going to, things are going to happen. And this pulls into that category. So in one sense, it's anticipated that we're going to have these occurrences, and we do put a 10% or 5% contingency in there for this kind of thing, and we're within those parameters.
You're dealing with a section of the high school that's close to one of your walls. The conditions are unknown until you start removing things from the wall, opening up panels. There's a, here's illegal wiring in there, we're fixing now just because it's hanging up there, and it's a rope bit that was soft cut, left in place, retained now, so we don't have to do down, we're trying to make it right as we go.
Something else I also want to say with the electrician. I think before you can get an estimate, you can't, I mean, we're not paying the electrician to go in and open the panels, because when we're trying to get a bid on something, you know, so I think that's what you're trying to make clear, is that you'd have to have had a contract for that electrician to come in and open the panel, we'd have to have paid. And he gave a bid, or they did your estimates, whatever they did, without opening, because until you give it to them, they can't, can't go in there.
Of course. Ms. Rusin.
I have more of a concern with the process, as Mr. Rogers alluded to. The fact that we just approved upgrades to the electrical system at our last meeting, and I as facilities chair didn't know about these change orders. There has to be some way we can fix the process so that when board members contact me, when others on the facilities committee contact me, I can know what I'm talking about. I'm in the business, so I kind of have some idea of what's going on, but it's just surprising to me, how can we tell the public, let alone our fellow board members, what's going on if we're not notified of these last minute change orders? And I understand there's a lot of last minute things happen, things are discovered, we can't possibly know some of the things going into a job, but we have to improve the process.
Mr. Scolera.
I agree with that, I'm looking at new superintendent, because I have to take something. The past week I've run the lot, but he's given us Friday briefings now that are excellent. Can we now get a briefing if there's going to be a change order before we get to the meeting and see? Can we get a briefing on the change order the same way you're sending some other briefings out? Not a briefing, not tell us what this was, Charlie, we saw it on the agenda.
What I, we, I'm, I'm in fresh. What I can tell you, when we've worked with Paul even today, we walked aside, he's been extremely communicative, and when Ms. Jaimins emailed him with further questions, he responded almost immediately with specifics. And so what we can do moving forward is make sure, as we talked about the committee structure, as these happen, and again, Paul has been right on top of it, and a lot of these things you don't know until you rip things down, which is why they build into the budget that. As long as we keep that communication going, we'll make sure that we get, as we talked about at retreat, to a chairperson who can then just send me the information, and then come that Friday, we make sure everyone has a follow-up. We're, I mean, as I say, you have this exactly as we got it and pretty much exactly as they found it. And so we have to move forward in that kind of understanding, that as these things come about, we are in communications, right in the building, we talked today, we walked over to the high school and walked us through, not only the issues we're talking about today, but issues we need to share and vote.
Any other specific questions on these change orders as opposed to the process? We can talk about that on the new business, but I think that, you know, let's get through the agenda.
One explanation for the team.
Yes, can you explain the next one, and then I have a question.
We're up to change the 100 resolution 14, which is the HCU upgrades at the high school, the $102,000.
That's real simple. Our process and our charge was to do unit ventilator replacement in the rooms. In the last four months, somebody asked, can we air condition it first? So, the $102,000 is to go from just having unit ventilators in the room, having air conditioning in the room, which, again, we designed, had no additional charge to the owner.
Okay, who has that question?
Yeah, you jumped a little bit. The original design for unit vent was questioned by the contractor. As you may know, the end of the music room is round. Unit ventilators, about the length of these cables and square, would have to pack out the round wall plus the unit ventilator. The music room already has air conditioning in, the one on the end, the other ones have little window units in them. The problem is, in the music room, once you pack out the wall square, you're taking about two to three feet of the upper riser to make a square wall. Now you have your two-foot univet in front of it, your four-foot riser is now an asshole foot, becomes useless educational space. That's what should have been done. In order to, the intent here is to, in lieu of destroying that riser, which we would have had to do anyway because steam lines run under it, we can cut them off in place, abandon them under the floor, we can put a rooftop unit on. That's what the proposal was for. Ban the original design, rooftop unit that will now do heat and air conditioning for that end of the building.
What was the request of the council?
It was an RFI issued by the contractor months and months ago. We had gotten an original price in, which in that budget you have there, of $225,000 to put two rooftop units on that end of the building. We eliminated one of them. We are still putting one in, but we are going to supply the cooling coils and condensers for the other three unit vents going in that end of the building. There's window units in there now that are probably 10 years old or older, inefficient. We can give you a better cooling system in there, and you're not going to displace the risers, and you're not going to lose the room, climbing with 140-plus children in the court.
I have a question. Now you can help me with how this process works. Now, there's a plan, I'm going to simplify this. A plan comes before the school board and we vote. This is the, this is the plan we want to execute, okay? And then you're obligated to execute that plan. Now, somebody else comes along, like the contractor in this case, and they submit a RFI that spent $102,665.
It is. They questioned how to install the units, and could we destroy the upper riser?
And your answer was?
No, you cannot destroy the upper riser.
So can you explain to me, and to this board, to help me understand this, how did we come to a change order of $102,665? How did we come to that?
Because you have two options. Right, unfortunately, we have two options. We either have to redesign the entire system again to try to find units that'll fit on the riser, which right now is, our back is against the wall, time-wise, or we go with the rooftop unit option. The original proposal came in in May, back and forth with the contractor, his numbers were absolutely ridiculous. I went back and forth with him in emails, letters, for probably a month before he asked for a redesign. We walked through it almost immediately after, came up with another alternative as to what we could do, we changed the design, changed scope to try to minimize.
I think someone was asking this, who was asked for the change?
This was when? May, okay, yeah, let's stop. This was May, and now it's almost, here's, here's, here's my point. I understand that this has to be done. I understand, we don't have a choice, all right? I understand. But I would ask this board to consider that when an RFI, or there's a change order that reaches a certain threshold, and that we're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars, but, excuse me, hundreds of thousands of dollars, that again, the process be set up so that we could see this and understand it and find out what's going on. Now, yes, I understand that it's in the budget, we budgeted for, it's still taxpayers' dollars. We still have a responsibility, an obligation, to, at the very least, try to find, find out how we come to these conclusions, and if we could shave this money down, maybe we can.
I agree with you, which is why this isn't a formal change order for you to approve tonight. This was put out there so everyone is made aware of it, because I don't want to go take any further action. If you guys are going to reject it outright, the contractor's going to have, we're going to have to come up with another plan.
Or they're going to put in what's designed.
This was not, there's no formal change order for you to execute tonight. I need, I wanted to bring everyone up to speed as quickly as possible, because right now we're running out of time on ordering equipment. So if there is an issue with it, we can reject it outright, we'll find another alternative.
Okay, I have to ask a couple of questions. If this building received a C of O, and had to be ventilation events in all the classrooms, and whatever system was designed for there originally received the benefit of occupants? What, right, correct? Your original, okay. What I've been told every time I go in that room is, well, the system was designed wrong, the air conditioning's not big enough, because it would have had met the ventilation code for the C of O to be issued as per the plans. So, where did the univets come in that you want to put in? And I'm trying to figure this out, because I was here during the C of O process.
There are, so, what's called for in the design document, is replace what's there with new unit ventilators. As you've said, older unit ventilators are smaller, they don't put out as much air, they don't need current code. Younger ones are larger, they blow a lot more air, and they need code. So what's called for is for new unit ventilators to go back in the same location as the old ones, to meet code. Is there a bigger?
No, but listen, Mr. Stevens. If we weren't doing any work there, it met the C of O, so the ventilators did need to be changed, correct? We're complaining, or the issue is that the place, the air condition, it wasn't sized properly for the room, for the air condition, is that, is that the issue really?
No, the issue is you're taking out the steam system and putting in a hot water system.
Why are we taking the steam? Just explain to me, I'm trying to.
Because that's what the whole heating replacement was, was to get rid of the old outdated inefficient boilers, and put in high efficiency hot water boilers. Can't load a hot water through the steam line, it's just not.
So this has nothing to do with the room's never air conditioned properly, and when there's, this, this, you're fixing that problem by doing what you're doing, but that's not really why we're doing the order.
So you're clear, the original design does not do anything with air conditioning at all, what's in there now is to remain.
Right, no, no, but I'm just saying, that room does have air conditioning off the system that was built, but they tell me it wasn't designed properly. Because there is air conditioning comes on, just doesn't keep the room cool, from what I understood. That's what I was told by personnel in our school district.
That I don't know, I know there's two.
Because there's a thermostat that controls the air conditioning, from what I understood, for that room.
Two separate units for air that have nothing to do with your unit.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
They come out of nothing less. And that's supposed to, it's supposed to be air conditioning wasn't sized properly. That's what I'm trying to get, and that's why I'm trying to figure out all the pieces here. So, you, what you're doing is modifying the heating system under a different contract. And the unit ventilators that are there, to put the larger ones in, the reason you really have to put the change order is, they're already spec'd in to be done. If we wanted this change order, you could tear apart the risers, put those other units in as per the current contract.
Correct.
Okay. So what you're really doing is presenting it as an option, not to ruin the risers, not really a change order from something, it's a, it's a request, and that's why it's wrong out here. It was a discussion for us to have, if we want to keep the risers, because you can go ahead with the plan, not cost us another dollar, but we're going to lose room for the 140 kids. Because that's whoever designed, I'm, I'm going to pitch up, was that a current past, past architect we had, or is that a current architect we have?
That was the original, original system from the building.
So it's on?
Twenty-five years old, I'm not sure.
No, 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 no.
I'm talking about the unit ventilators.
Unit ventilators is us.
Okay. So you originally spec'd the big one in there.
I spec'd a normal-sized unit.
Okay. So then, you went on with, I guess, our staff, the works crew said that that would be unacceptable with the riser, and came up with this proposal. Is that basically what happened?
I don't know where, I don't know where the request of what to do is, I'm sure it came out of something.
What ended up happening is your contractor looked at it and realized that you have to square the wall up, you're losing a foot, plus your two-foot univet. If you're three-foot out on like a four or five-foot riser, it's greatly impacting the size of the risers.
So the bottom line on all of this, the bottom line rule on this is that if we don't do this, we'll be, we'd be okay, except we shrink the size of the room to where it's going to be insufficient to accommodate the students, that number of students in there. So we're doing it to make the room great size for the students.
Yes, and eventually you'll be increasing the room size now, because the equipment that is allowing that out of the wall is going to be demolished anyway.
So that is, do we go ahead with that or not? That is the question to the board, and, I guess the other question, that is, if there's money in the referendum for this, in the context of the referendum, have we decided what we want to spend it on?
Is that what Paul was presenting first? Is this an option?
Basically, an option. Honestly, to me, the most important thing is educational space. And to take that away from that room, I know speaking with your music director, choir director, that room's built. I mean, I've been in there.
It's a busy room.
It is. They use it year-round. And I hate to see that square footage that you know you're going to need, maybe you don't need it now, but you're always going to need, you always need square footage.
And I appreciate that. My concern, actually I have two concerns. I certainly would like to know who instigated the change order to do this, I guess, was a board member or a VA or certain president, was, I don't even, I don't need to know that tonight, tonight, but I'm just, would be curious as to who instituted that, you look into this change. Secondly, if we don't go along with your recommendation, then what is the other, is another option?
Possibly shopping for different unit ventilators, but the time.
Pretty much all the same.
Yeah, the time impact is going to be detrimental.
Might make final limits to which is shorter. I doubt you're going to find one that's two-foot shorter.
That's the current issue. Univets in there now are very small. You've got two univets with reconvection units, and the convection units are maybe six inches. You're putting in three univets that are two-foot by almost eight, ten-foot in length to get the air exchange that you need.
I think the problem, the issue has been clarified, at least as far as I can tell, and hopefully let's try to close this out, and we're going to make a decision.
My question to the gentleman, is, my question has to do with a quote that was given to certain individuals this year. Some of the work from the quote for this work, the $102,000 chamber, it doesn't say anything about whether or not we're going to have a trade representative on site to check that, do the startup. Is that true? Right? I thought it said it.
Yes, it does, it says startup on the trade equipment.
It will be, there'll be a trade.
Yes.
Okay. And then, do they have anything, I thought I read something about there'd be no spare parts.
Now, that goes under the attic stock, that would be.
Because I have, all right.
Those would be your filters, and I just want that developed to be classified under your attic stock, which the contractor would have to give you anyway.
The one I read said not including startup, not.
Is this all including this cost, additional cost on top of the?
There will be additional cost to this for the electrician to make the connections. This is not the overall contract like the other school. I do not have that yet. The electrician has the documents for about two weeks, which is pricing it off. I don't even want to be guessed when it hit the ballpark, because I don't know what panels are exactly where in the basement level or the tunnel layers.
Are we talking $100,000, $50,000, $25,000? I mean, a quarter of magnitude, quarter of magnitude. That's why I don't want to scare anybody else, you know, people who are not thinking of.
By the way, tell me under vet, under tang rate.
Okay.
You're talking, you're talking a feeder line.
Okay.
Now, also, also included in this $100,000 is changing the proposed unit ventilators, which were just for the other three unit ventilators, to add air conditioning. So there's two condensers, three condensers located outside as well.
That's adjacent.
That's up to you. You don't want to do that for them, that is totally fine, I don't disagree with that. My recommendation to you though would be, since the units are not ordered yet, we're going to release them, depending on what your decision is, to at least add the cooling coils now, at a minimal cost. You can always get your condensers and pipe them in later, and it's less money later down the road.
All righty, let's move the question. Well, we're going to vote on each one, so. So what do we call the roll for?
Number 12.
Number 12. Do we have another option?
Mr. President, I move on resolution AA number 12.
Sir.
Call her on.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Sizado?
Yes.
Mr. Fookta?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move resolution number 13, as prepared.
Second. Call her on.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizado?
Yes.
Mr. Fookta?
Yes.
Do you want to reword the report to move forward with this check? Or are we going to move to a change order? If you want to formalize it?
Mr. Sizado, move on the motion.
Move forward on what?
Yes, just.
On the proposed, or proposed to change.
Mr. President, I move amendment number 14, to move forward for HC upgrades in other high schools.
Sir.
So it's not a change order, it's just a proposal. Move the authorization.
Authorization.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizado?
Yes.
Mr. Fookta?
Yes.
Mr. President, I move resolution number 15, as prepared.
Second. Call her on.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mrs. Sizado?
Yes.
Fookta?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school relevant matters. Our regulation allows 30 minutes for these conversations. Any persons are limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please remind them that your statement is to blatantly, personally direct, and abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, participation being terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and every time you address the board or the first person wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Clamapapa. I live at 68 Reach Street in Napa. I'd like to welcome our new superintendent to the system. I'd like to welcome our new superintendent, this is him, and the reason I'm here in front of the board is to talk about uniform dress codes. I know that this passed, in the past, when this subject had been approached and there's been much controversy over it. I truly feel at this time, once again, to bring this subject to the table and make a clear and conscious decision about it. I know that there will be many different opinions here. I am here only to express my opinion, and I fully respect the opinion of the board and the other parents that may wanna speak tonight on this subject as well. I did spend some time researching this topic, and this is the result of that search. The reasons for school uniforms is a significant counterstrike against the powerful influence of increasingly aggressive popular culture. School kids are preparing for the workplace and had a dress there. A uniform sends the message that school is a workplace. It's easy, it's basic, and it actually today is much cheaper than buying fashionable clothes that we see our kids wearing today. It also helps to diminish economic and social barriers between students. Uniforms take the focus off of fashion and put it on learning, along with helping students resist peer pressure to buy trendy clothing to wear to school. No one can make fun of what you're wearing, but they're wearing the same thing. It increases school spirit. It reduces the issue of children dealing with what to wear to school every day. And most importantly, and I think it's very, very important, is that it encourages discipline. School officials do have the responsibility to provide a safe, secure, and productive learning environment, and dress and appearance play a role in doing all of that. Dress codes and uniforms help reduce potential for conflict. I mean, economic status, conflicts from comments and personal attacks by who has better clothing on them. It reduces ways in which gang members can identify themselves. It reduces the risk of students being brought with expensive clothing and jewelry. And it can certainly help administrators identify non-students or trespassers or other visitors, visitors in your hallways. There are some opposing issues. The biggest one, and it comes more from parents, I think, than anybody else, is it violates a student's right of freedom of expression. Children go to school a hundred and eighty days a year. That's not a lot of days compared to three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They can wear whatever they want when they're not here. The freedom of expression should be shown today in other ways. It shouldn't be shown on what BBL fit that cost two hundred dollars, cause the kid next to you had a shopping Kmart. It should be shown because they excel in the arts, or in a sport, some kind of academic field, rather than, you know, who's got on whatever. Even if they wanna color their hair something different, so what? To identify themselves. A uniform makes things simple and easy. Another big thing was the cost and the expense of a uniform. Back in the day, yes, they may have been very expensive. All you saw was in capital schools. But today, dress uniforms consist of a colored polo shirt, khaki pants. They should be chosen by both the school administrator and a parent. The everyday items can be purchased at stores like Target, JCPenney, Land's End, Kmart. The range of the shirts costs from eight to fifteen dollars, and pants are from eighteen to twenty-five. Nationwide reports say that principals expressed strong support for uniform dress codes with eighty-five percent saying they were in favor of it because it improves student behavior, it reduces peer sexual harassment, and prepares students for the work world. School uniforms tend to involve students more in making them a part of a team. This is not to take away their individuality, but to include everyone on the same level as far as image and dress is concerned. Some components to make it successful. Treating the silent garment involving parents, students, teachers, and administration. It must be affordable, and it must be easily available in all sizes. The program must address and provide for seasonal options. And they also have to allow for religious cultures, certain exemptions. Currently, twenty-five to thirty districts in New Jersey have adopted school uniform policies, and the numbers are increasing. In our area alone, of course, we know Bellevue has it, Lynnhurst has it, Lodi has it. There are several other communities that are looking at it. Currently, Bluefield did not adopt their uniform policy because they had sort of an interim superintendent or superintendent or principal, and he was actually afraid to actually make that kind of conscious decision for fear that the public would rebel. Uniform policies in the state of New Jersey, on the request of the principal, staff, parents of students at school, the local board may enact a dress code that includes uniforms, provided the board finds the policy will improve the school learning environment. The policy, when adopted after a public hearing, must give parents pretty much notice and include a provision to assist economically disadvantaged families. The principals, staff, and parents of students at individual schools will choose the uniform. And the board may choose to add a family opt-out clause if so, and students who opt out cannot be sanctioned academically or otherwise. That is a state and worldwide policy on uniforms. I feel that every child has a special gift to offer the world, so why do we want them to worry more about what the child next to him or her is wearing? It takes away from what is so important today, an education. Some people will argue that a parent should be more responsible and know what their child is wearing in front of the house. Unfortunately, in today's society, at least half, if not more, parents are off to the workplace before their child leaves for school. This is because in today's world, we need two incomes to survive. If a child knows that a uniform is required, it makes it a lot simpler for them to get dressed in the morning. Some people will argue that uniforms only belong in urban areas. I've heard that a million times. Well, you know what? That's really judgmental. You know, we're not urban, we're suburban, but take a look around. It's not far behind. And who has any brain to judge another person's adaptive brain? In this world, things are so complicated, so I ask, and I want, why not simplify the things we can? California leads the nation in public school uniform use. Philadelphia became the first large city board to require school uniforms for approximately two hundred thousand, thousand students in all grades of the two hundred and fifty-nine public schools there. My question to you, board tonight, and for any other parent, again, this is just my opinion, why not value? Thank you.
Can we have a copy of the?
Absolutely. I'll be happy to print you one out.
And of course, we've got him displaced, President, I think I'm not seeing him work. I just have four things, Mr. President, first of all, would you like to run the event hand, welcoming Mr. Lasbit? Um, we actually could start even giving Mr. Lasbit to try to, for whatever concerns we have, and we, we can't just stay more than, so thank you for your coming, Mr. Lasbit. Um, just, I have a question about the school-based therapy services. Uh, I know we had spoken about that last year. I was just wondering if they would be there going to be working with our students again this year? The school-based therapy services, the OTs, they're coming, is there going to be another contract for that for this year?
Yes.
Alright. And, um, you know that you have some money. I was just wondering, Mr. Lasbit. Um, this happened, and I can say that at a board level, because we spoke about it at a board level, uh, about a couple months ago, there were parents who were talking about art teachers, and there were cuts to librarians, and I just wanted to speak to them about very, um, very quickly about one of our teacher in particular over at Bank of Schools, Barron's. He's been very, very successful with our kids, um, with large, um, assisted populations, so if you can kindly think about keeping him in a capacity that would do very, very well for our kids. It's become more than just art. It's more like art therapy, so it's something that's more of a creative service. And, um, my last, um, my last item, this is all the stat, very sad actually. Uh, about a couple weeks ago, we lost one of our NPM mothers on Cass Field, and, um, she was, she was special, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm just very happy that I have the opportunity to, you know, her as a son and son-in-law. But I just wanted to, you know, that, uh, NPM depends on having a, um, college, I mean, not just a college scholarship, but a scholarship for, um, any type of tru-, um, training or scholarship that especially is needed for, for, as a high school graduate, he would be looking to, you know, give you a scholarship for that, because we, we just have to, and she was just a wonderful advocate for the kids, and we want her to be free too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a big enough one, I think, with our guy. Um, I'm up for two points. One, I wanted to find out if the board has made a decision about the additional funds who stayed in the federal government on how it's gonna be spent, or have you still decided on that?
You mean the state or the federal?
Well, you got, I read about a million plus, and then there was mention of a half million and change.
My opening remarks, that's why I stated that it's five hundred and forty thousand additional state aid from the state, that was just announced. The, we had, our state aid had been increased by five hundred thousand. We knew about that when we were constructing the budget, so that was all built in. So the incremental piece is the five hundred and forty thousand state.
And have you made a decision on how you're willing to spend that? Which restorations from the class that you made, that you're going to cut the money to?
There, well, in tonight's resolutions, I think there are a couple of items which are restored, the music, music teacher, and, so, so yes, we have talked about it, and we, based on our, our own strategic goals, priorities, we are taking decisions on those things.
So you're only restoring the music teacher to all five elementary schools, but not the art teachers and librarians?
Like, we also are planning to, the librarian media specialist will be squared also.
But not the art?
Moving forward with other pieces, those pieces from the resolutions.
I'm sorry, I just asked you to respectfully consider restoring Mr. Barron's as an art teacher instead of a Gen I classroom teacher at Badger. Um, he's done, I wonder, with all of the children, um, the kids that need a little bit of extra help from other planning, he's really gifted at having them have great success. Um, the second point I wanted to make is, it would be helpful for me as a member of the general public, I don't know about anybody else, it just makes things a little, um, time consuming, if when contracts voted on and the basic terms of the contract were put in the agenda, um, the length of time, the cost of services, and specific services, that would be right, and help me not have to come here and ask questions or some over requests.
Thank you.
Michael Giddy, Thirteenth Jackson Street, Nutley. Uh, I actually came to speak about the principal position at the high school, but I just wanna chime in on the uniform issue. I recently changed district as a principal of Garvis High School to another district, and, uh, it's instrumental in bringing the uniforms to the high school. Uh, four hundred students, there, there was a uniform dress code as opposed to a uniform. The board can't implement a uniform dress code without providing, uh, any assistance, actually, to anyone in the district. You just have to set the parameters of the uniform dress code. Uh, the difference in the discipline level and the difference in the incidence of bullying went dramatically down in a very short period of time, and those, uh, uniforms are still in place, and, uh, the whole process has been very successful. So, uh, I've lived in town now for just over two years, and the two years I've been here, uh, I can't help but notice that the kids', uh, fashion sense is leaning towards going towards completely inappropriate, uh, less and less clothing, uh, and it's, I watched them going into school when the weather got warm, and I was like, thank God I'm in a high school where I have uniforms, because that was a major, major problem. Um, the second issue, uh, the original issue I came for was I wanted to know, uh, we're five weeks away from the opening of the high school, and there's been no action taken on replacing the, the principal, who I think left July first. Um, I just wanted to know, why is that, why is that?
There hasn't been no action. There's actually been a great deal of action. It posted for interim position. Uh, having gone through the resumes and the working report and the community, that's a decision that I, the superintendent coming in July one, did not wanna rush. Uh, we have a pool of applicants who can start as soon as they're hired, because they're all retirees. We have the staff at the high school who are doing everything that they need to do to make sure that we're ready to open. Um, one way or the other, we have certificates, staffs, that building is safe and orderly, and during the construction, we'll be in there on time, and we can, we can open up.
Can I, can I ask what happened to the resumes of the people who, uh, it was posted the beginning of April to position? Um, and I know it closed at the end of April, and I'm aware you didn't start until July first, but can I ask what was done with the resumes of all of the people that applied? Were they in some way notified?
Out of respect, out of respect, Super Meta was gonna take this chair, me or anyone else. The board chose to hold off to make sure the person coming in could be part of the selection process, so as far as people to July, that was part of it. I can tell you what happened as soon as I was going in June, was that for every open position, I went through every single resume personally. Um, there were phone screens that were had, and I moved forward with all the different vacancies and different ways based on the applicant pool, which is all I'm willing to say, but, in respect for the applicants.
Okay, so those applicants that applied originally were in some way notified of the way in the process?
Actually, I, none of them were necessarily notified, except for ones I spoke directly to. We, depending on which position you talk about, that's our high school position, there were phone screens involved, there were a bit of community works involved. Again, none of this necessarily appears on the agenda, although the result of two of those processes resulted in one of the hires today. And part of that is I've been going through, trying to find the exact right person for which position. And, uh, again, I had my own retirees coming in based on the buildings, as you talked about. And as it happened, we happened to find an exceptional candidate, but not for the high school principal position at this time.
Can I ask that in the future, that the board consider that if professional people are gonna apply for positions in the district, whether it's a, uh, paraprofessional teacher or administrator, that they at least be notified that their resumes have been recei-, uh, received? I mean, it, it won't cost anything. Most of them come with email addresses.
You've already instituted a process, to your point, where everything will be handled on Jonathan, so people will, now, there's gonna be uniforms, I won't guarantee that. We could have private districts. I've had hundreds of people apply for positions. With those we contact, and I can tell you from my, even the experiences here, everyone that we've contacted, even via phone screen, has always had a follow-up, and always knows the status of their, their themselves in the process, every single person.
Thank you.
Hi, Marie Deverly, Thirty-Second Street, Nutley. On behalf of the Nutley Music Boosters, welcome. Uh, a couple of questions. Pay to participate, I know you mentioned it in the beginning, but to be absolutely honest, we didn't hear a word you said back there. Um, I assume you said it's going forward? If it is, when will parents be notified?
Uh, the first reading for the policies, it was today. Um, we need to forward the policy to me. Uh, we have to build a regulation, kind of, even reviewing policies and regulations from the district, and believe me, again, coming in, we're trying to get everything in place as quickly but as correctly as possible. And, um, one of the things I have been doing, working with members of the board, is trying to get out to the community, to talk about exactly what the specifics are, why they're going forward, how it will impact different people, where things are going, so we're with which transparency.
Is it still two hundred dollars per child?
At the initial draft, right now, the policy is two hundred, three hundred, I was pushing to present to the board.
Um, my concern, um, I know football practice has started. Um, a friend of mine who worked two to three jobs to support her family, she doesn't really participate in the Nutley Sun reading. She, she has no time for that. She does for her stuff, stuff, and her family. I had a conversation with that boy and another football player, and the other football player said to him, how come you're not at practices in the morning at the camps? He said, my mom can't afford it. The other football player in turn says, well, just come, there's other kids who don't pay. His words, no, if I don't, when I get caught, I'll embarrass my mom. Keep in mind, there are parents that cannot pay this, and trust me, you want these kids in the program, so.
I want, I want every student involved, and you go.
Please do that, mom. It's something I witnessed this week.
Absolutely. And part of the policy that we've already drafted includes those kinds of situations, I have a procedure to handle those with the utmost care to make sure that we're not embarrassing the student or family.
Excellent. Um, second thing about that, is marching dance still included?
No, it is not.
No, it's not?
No, it is not.
Thank you.
Exactly. It's, it's part of athletic class.
And, um, the last thing is, I, my husband and I were fortunate enough to attend the Italy trip with the high school band. And I have to tell you how proud I am of each and every one of those children, from their performance to their behavior, to their respect of the, the land, the culture, the history. Um, I don't think I would've wanted to experience any other way, but with this group of kids and parents. And I just wanna make sure you know their performances were impeccable. It was a fabulous trip all the way around. They were concerned for their fellow classmates who did become ill on the trip. They showed great respect for him. They signed T-shirts for him, and postcards, and it was a phenomenal trip. And I just thought you should know that for parents that went on the trip. Thank you.
Thank you, first. Anyone else? If not, I'll.
Alright, tonight, John Joseph Kuzinski, Six Fifty Two Frank, what have you? Um, I just want, uh, to address my opinion in, uh, on the dress code. Um, as a taxpayer in this town for over fourteen years, and I have a child in the system, it's been through the system, it's life. I think it would be a good thing for this dress code. Speaking from my experience, I've been to a private high school and a public high school. And, um, I sincerely believe my academic performance is much better than private high school, particularly in dress. Um, whether it's, excuse me for my tone tonight, although, whether it's a concert shirt or something, some person's fault. I mean, it's, uh, it would be a great thing for all kids to be, but like, go to school, learn to dress up, and go to school. That's the bottom line.
Thank you, Chair.
Hi, my name is Thomas White, live at One Twenty Two Walnut Street. And again, on behalf of the Nutley Music Boosters, I want to welcome Mr. Lasbit. And I want to commend the board for addressing the issues that we had with the, uh, scheduling conflicts. And I also want to thank, uh, you guys for hearing us out, and also, we have seen a couple changes already. You know, we're falling, not walking yet, but that's okay. That's okay. Still keeping hope alive, you know? So a couple of kids have had this schedule change, and I want to commend you, sir. And also, I just wanna thank you guys for being stated, Mr. V. I think this, that's an amazing, amazing asset to this program. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I'll do that brief. Uh, my name is Tim Lucas. I actually grew up on Forty-One North Route Terrace, over in Cedar Grove, so I hope you won't hold that against me. We played baseball on the round back in the day. But I'm a pastor of a church called Liquid Church, which I know you're, uh, considering, uh, for partnership for hosting our weekend services here at John Walker Middle School in the, uh, auditorium. And I just wanted to thank you for that, uh, so much, just for that consideration. Uh, really is an honor, growing up in Cedar Grove, and, uh, I live actually over in Madison. And I know Nutley is one of those towns, that's kinda rare in New Jersey. It's very much a family town, very much a, a gem, and, uh, we intend, uh, it really, it'd be an honor to be considered, uh, you know, to host services here on Sunday. And I know that's a, that's a rare thing. I don't take that for granted. More than anything, I'd like to let you know that we don't consider that at all something that's a given. Um, and particularly John Walker Middle School, um, I taught over at Summit Middle School for eight years, and I know what goes into keeping a school in this immaculate condition, and so our goal is to leave it better than we found it. Uh, we really appreciate your consideration for that use. We had a chance to talk with Mrs. Damon and Mr. Kuzinski. We appreciate their, uh, their partnership as well. So just wanted to thank you for that, and also introduce us, and answer any questions that would be- So just want to thank you for that, and also introduce us, and, uh, answer any questions that would be helpful to you. Just want to thank you very much.
Thank you. See, no other people coming forward. I'll close this portion of the meeting. Before we go to old business, I'd like to just, uh, introduce Gina Delon, who, uh, we appointed tonight as director of curriculum. Gina's still here. She can stand up. Any old business? Any good business?
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Great. I don't know, I think they're a hybrid of both, and they're able to do that. Um, first, goes to this process for change orders. You all know this, you've all been patient and listening to me, both as an audience member now, as a board member on these issues. Ms. Evans has had to deal with it for the last two and a half months with me. I really think, in light of the fact that this has been such a sore spot for this district in the past with prior boards, I think we need to really carefully implement a process where at least our change orders are forms of basic best practice. You don't have, it, it's a simple thing. It would be a justification for them. That's what epic should be doing on our behalf as a construction manager. They're like the independent authority that comes in and acts on our behalf and says where, where, where the liability lies. If it lies with the district, because as we heard on the $102,000 change order, it was a request by the owner, then okay, then it's explainable to the public. Right now, there's just so much paper and not any clarity in that favor. There's a lack of clarity. So, um, you know, Ms. Evans and Mr. Laszlo, I implore you, please, get people to work. It is a basic fact. These are basic forms. We should be getting it as a matter of course. And the fact that this board hasn't been getting those forms from these professionals is a problem. It's a real problem. Um, this board has been under, you know, this district has been under scrutiny for these change order issues, and I don't want to have to change that. So, um, I know that. Um, second is another construction issue. Um, you know, we have this construction going on in the schools. I think as board members, we need, um, some countdown schedules prepared, and we need updates going forward. I think we should demand that our professionals give us that information ASAP. So all us board members know where they are, where they need to be. Um, and in terms of, you know, the last minute, we're not struggling to get our janitors having to step in if they weren't responsible for that. Or we get the pleading people in, um, I would just ask that that be done, and then I think I would.
Mr. Wazinski?
Yes, Mr. President. You and I talked briefly. There's been some concern from some of the board members about the education, Nutley Educational Foundation.
Yes.
Um, there are quite a few of us, there are some of us who would like to, um, put some activity into raising money in, in unique ways, as Mr. Spiller had mentioned, as Dr. Reed had mentioned to me. And, and I'd like a little more information on the Educational Foundation, you know? I know you're a part of that, but doesn't seem to be as active as I think what the other board members think it should be.
Or the members of the foundation, I think, would agree with you that we do need to find ways to, as a source of other funds for the district. And, and they would invite all the board members to come to the meetings. Now, the meetings are on the third Wednesday of the month. None in July, but August, so starting in September, the third Wednesday. All board members are welcome, and you put the parents welcome.
Can we get?
They are in the, uh, high school, in the library and high school.
Okay. I'm sure we'll follow up with more.
And ideas would be welcome. Excuse me, Mr. President. Just chairing that committee. Mrs. Alamo is still pres- is president of the Purple Foundation, and Barbara Hirsch. She the president now?
I don't know, she's the president, but I know she's been chairing several, because.
Barbara Hirsch is on that, and, and, Marie Almo.
Speaking back on what, uh, Mr. Wazinski said. Last year, Mr. Soder had approached the idea of building a strong alumni association. Uh, in a school district like this, with all that we truly have going for us, all the success stories that are out there, I would ask that the board consider maybe a partnership with the superintendent's office, pursue that, to, to get a very strong alumni association developed. Because I'm sure with, uh, people in that association, we might find, uh, some needed help down the road.
In fact, I've been approached by, uh, Mr. Ricky, who wants, thinks that Washington School has been a great foundation for alumni associations at that level. So there are various ideas that we can work on, and who's asked, again, as a source.
I, I see Mr. Soder is very comfortable where he's at. You want to come back and, uh?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Thanks for the idea. Good idea.
Yes.
I'll repeat a couple of things. But one, actually, my meeting, my first meeting with the superintendent with the Foundation for Alumni is number one. One of the first things we spoke about, creating a program, also creating constant flow through the Education Foundation, as you, as this has spoken about. Number two, I strongly agree with, uh, if I call it big, not big, this, uh, victory here, about the way we're going to do, like, so different change orders and things, there's no reason, you know, and it's not, it's not, you can just be epic. We have staff that's following this up. I'm sure that follows them around, um, through the email system and reports, and I have to go. You know, I, um, the superintendent first meeting, both talked about technology, but there's no reason emails just can't come out. Give us the updates about the situation before citizens, and that's just the issue, so, or we get into it.
Thank you. Any other good business? If not, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.